We're going to call it Tuesday, April 19, 2016, Manistee City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shaw, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Here.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
City assessor?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have one. Public hearing on the 2016-17 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. The city fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. Under Section 7-4 of the Charter, a public hearing is required on the budget which must be adopted not later than May 15th of each year. A work session was held on Tuesday, April 10th with an additional work session scheduled for later this evening. An optional work session can be scheduled for Tuesday, April 26th. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the May 3rd, 2016 meeting. At this time, public has an opportunity to comment on the 2016-17 budget and the Capital Improvement Plan. Is anyone who'd like to comment on the budget? Comments are limited to five minutes.
Name's Brian Chick, 276 First Avenue. I guess first I got a question. Since we're going to raise water and sewer rates, are city employees able to wash their vehicles yet down at the city garage?
Yes, they pay for that for...
How much?
They pay a dollar.
A dollar. Can I bring my car down there and wash it then? For a dollar? Just asking because city taxpayers pay for the heat, the electricity, we pay for the water and sewer, and if you can wash your car for a buck, I can't wash my car for a buck around here in one of the car washes. And if you're going to tax us by raising our sewer and water rates, I think we should all have that option, be able to wash our cars down there.
Okay.
And another question, can we repair vehicles down there yet? Because I was going to say MML probably doesn't agree with that anymore. And I see we're saving $35,000 on a Ram stall. I see ways we can change and save some money by plowing differently and our fall leaf pickup. Because to me, we spend a lot of time, one plow truck following, another plow truck around. When, if I was a kid, on the north side, one plow truck took care of the, our side. Right now, you're doubling your amount of fuel, your rate of pay, you've got to figure your benefits in there, warrant here on the vehicles, so... I guess that's it for right now. Let somebody else have a choice. Thank you.
So anyone else who'd like to comment on the budget? Mr., can you state your name, Andrews?
Hi, Ed Tegmer, 522 Fifth Avenue. I guess I wasn't going to say anything because I didn't think that we'd be answering questions, but since we're answering questions, I guess I'll ask. Previous budgets, there's been a line item for Fifth Avenue beach improvements, picnic area improvements. I went off through this budget, I didn't see it. Did it drop off? Is it gone or is that no longer there?
We're having a budget discussion later this evening that we can discuss those.
Okay. Also, on page 163 of the organization chart, there's no square for the boards and commissions. That usually comes right off the city council as we report to the city council, so that must have been inherently omitted. Just letting you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to comment on tonight's budget? Yes, please come forward, state your name, Andrews.
Carol Pascoe, 6th and Spur Street. I just would like to say that I hope as you're considering budget that everybody thinks about the fact that we're more than streets. That's one. And that Manistee is much more than streets. And the second thing is, you can get a dollar car wash over on First, near First Street because I take mine there all the time for a dollar.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on tonight's budget? Seeing none, we'll move on to some comments on agenda-related items. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk around the consent agenda are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approving the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken out during the weather portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session, consideration of annual American Legion auxiliary coffee sales, consideration of annual memorial drive, parade, and ceremony, and consideration of the National Day of Prayer gathering at City Hall.
I'd like a motion that council approved. Take action, approve the consent agenda asterisk.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmembers Zelinski, to approve the consent agenda as presented. There's no further discussion. See none, will you please take the roll? Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none, new business. Consideration of a contract return activated sledge pump project at the wastewater treatment plant. The heart of the treatment process at the wastewater treatment plant is an activated sledge process. Three pumps are used to circulate the activated sledge 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The current pumps have exceeded their life expectancy and are recommended to be replaced. The project was competitively bid with two bids being received. Sodorsky Brothers Escavating for $72,055, and Franklin Howell Company for $103,900. The recommended bid is Sodorsky Brothers for $72,055. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. Proceeds from the 2015 bond sale will fund the project. Is there a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we award the contract to low bidder Sodorsky Brothers Escavating of $17,055 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Woodliff, to approve the contract Sodorsky Brothers. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. I'm just curious why there would be such a big difference between the two bids. Wondering if we can get an opinion on that?
Some people have one. I don't have one. So I really couldn't answer that.
Curious.
This was publicly advertised, it was noticed, so it's around all the northern Michigan. This company actually specializes in doing work at wastewater treatment plants and had done some previous work for us, so we notified them specifically. From their stance, it may have been just a small project and they were going to make a buck on it if they got the contract, I'm not sure.
They're not a local company, I take it?
They're not, no, they're from downstate.
Any other questions? Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of Riverwalk repairs. Last fall, a section of Riverwalk approximately 300 feet long and adjacent to the Riverside Motel and Marina was identified as being structurally unstable due to erosion. This section of Riverwalk is currently closed to pedestrian traffic until repairs can be made. Spicer Group has identified several options for repair. Staff is recommending option three, which would include adding soil support and lining the shoreline with protective stone. The existing sidewalk would be replaced. Engineers have estimated the project cost at $80,000. Staff is working with the property owner to expand the project to include further protection to the Marina facilities. Is there a motion to take action?
I'll make the motion. I'll say it.
I have the motion by Councilmember Woodliff, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to approve the repairs. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there were five items listed in the agenda, recommendations, and item four and five of the recommendations are the ones that are recommended, yet we're moving forward on option three. Is there a reason for that?
So the option four and five both really involve the private landowner portion of the project, so, and the Riverwalk there, there's the concrete sidewalk, it's six feet wide, that portion's pretty much the city portion of the Riverwalk. Adjacent to that is a boardwalk, varies in width along this stretch, and that was privately constructed by the motel. And so, this option that we're recommending is really focusing on the city portion of it. And so what we're looking at proposing to do is, and it's mostly about participation and funding, what we're looking at doing is removing the boardwalk sections, setting them aside, and then fixing the Riverwalk, the city-owned portion, which will require removing the concrete slabs, bringing in some sand and embankment fill, bringing in stone riprap to protect against this erosion problem, and then reconstructing the sidewalk, and setting the boards back. And so we're not putting money into really rebuilding the wood deck portion because they have been doing their own work on it. And we'll probably have to do some shoring and a few things just to make sure it's supported. But the primary reason is, for this option three, is because it just focuses on the city-owned portion of the project, and doesn't include the dollars, because that option, the other options, we're pushing $150,000, because that would have included dragging sheet, steel sheeting, and then that was really kind of rebuilding the seawall portion, the private wood portion. And that would have took some participation from the landowner to fund it.
And you feel that there won't be further erosion by doing a limited repair like option three?
Yeah, if we do, if we, if we put in the riprap and we do that, we'll put geotex down under it, I feel that'll stop the erosion at the sidewalk. It's not the ideal situation, because I think the long-term for both the private owner and the public, you know, public government, Riverwalk really is probably, put the sheeting in, that would be a better long-term solution, but it's just the funding of it. And that was a $70,000 type line item to that private landowner to cover that part of it, and I just don't think they're in a position to do that right now. But I feel what we're doing will protect the Riverwalk from further erosion.
Do you have any idea how long that will last? I mean, the other two options were very long-term fixes and the ones that are recommended. I just want to make sure that we're not wasting money on something that's not going to be out there long-term, and that we'll have to go back in a few years and redo it again.
Right. I'll break that answer into two parts. I think the protection of the Riverwalk, you know, with what we're doing with the embankment, placing geotex down, putting the stone down a foot thick will be, you know, in engineering terms, within a 25, 50-year type design life. The part that won't last as long as what's there today, that seawall, if you've seen it, is in pretty rough shape, and they do work on it, I think they maintain, keep it going, but that's going to probably have a shorter lifespan if that's not improved. And so, and I think in the report I mentioned that short duration of lifespan, I was really kind of talking about that private-owned portion and the seawall itself being a wood wall, it's going to have a shorter lifespan as opposed to putting a brand-new steel sheet wall.
Thank you. Hey Sean, are you, you mentioned about the concrete removal. Are you going to lift those panels or take it all out and report?
We'll take them all out and report. Probably what'll happen, the problem will be, if we can save the panels, we may do that, that'll save some dollars, and we'll probably have this set up on unit-based pricing because, one of the things we don't know is the extent's really all the way down, and we have this problem in full length, and it may not be at a full length, so we're kind of trying to plan for the worst case and hope for the best. But by the time we get in there and they run a small, even if it's a small excavator up and down, we're going to be tearing into the walk. And so we're assuming all the walk comes out and we're reporting it at this time. And maybe it's less than that when we're done once we actually get down there.
Thank you. I have a question about, in the attachments, it all includes that we actually surveyed all the boardwalk, make sure there's no other problems? Is that what I read from there?
So the, what we did is, we pulled some boards, we looked at some of the photos you see in there, we looked at, the survey work we did was getting physical elevations all along it, so we have a good handle on our quantities, how long is it, how wide is it, and so...
Have we looked at the rest of the boardwalk? Is that all in good condition or are we going to have?
Oh, the rest, even beyond this whole area.
Right.
No, we weren't involved in looking at anything else. Only thing we looked at, we identified this erosion problem, and our focus, these Spicer Groups, was to look at, look at that area.
Certainly, we look at the surface of it several times in summer, and a lot of citizens actually call us and let us know if there's a board missing or some sort of safety hazard. But every four or five years, we actually float down the river and we look at the underside of the entire Riverwalk substructure, looking for any other type of issues. This 300-foot of Riverwalk is the only type of construction that exists where we just have slab upgrade, everything else is pile-supported one way or another.
And when, when, when was the last time that we floated the Riverwalk down?
It's probably been four years.
One thing probably worth noting is, with the LiDAR scanning work, recall we did a year ago or so, we also ran that LiDAR scanner down the river, and that machine actually takes photos as it goes and it's scanning it, so we actually have kind of a snapshot in time of the Riverwalk. I mean, it wasn't really the purpose of doing it, but we picked up the Riverwalk, the full length, and so, if we think things are shifting or moving, we'll have an opportunity to go back and check, because we did that last year, and so maybe we identify an area that looks like it's heaving or moving, we can go back and check now and see if that's how much it has moved. So we do have that data from a year ago. It wasn't really the intent of surveying it, but we have that information.
Do you know of any potential grants that might be available to help with that, or is that nothing?
Everybody we've asked has said no. We've explored that. The other thing I'd point out is the property owner is here, if you have any questions for her.
I thought there were, with the option four and five, there were the potential grant sources out there to assist with that. Are you saying that's not true anymore?
We talked to both of those sources. The one, the one source is an option maybe still, but it's the timing. We'd have to wait till next year to do it. We basically got a no on one, and you could try next, I think it was due in April, you could, you know, so we'd have to wait, wait a season and kind of go through the grant process to get it. So it'd be a time issue if we looked at, if we looked at that grant, we'd have to leave it, obviously the walk closed, you know, through the summer.
Wouldn't be a situation like the Saw Grant where some of the work that was already completed was eligible for application to Saw Grant funding?
No, it's different than that. It's basically, you'd be after it.
Thank you, Sean.
I have a question. Where, where are we going, how are we going to fund this? And we've talked about identifying a funding source, but where in the budget business is this going to fall, and do we have the funds?
Going to rely mostly on fund balance, whatever else we can get out of the DPW budget. We don't have a lot of different options. If we don't use fund balance and a combination of funding from the existing DPW budget, then we're faced with just leaving it closed for, until we can get the sufficient funding.
My name is Nancy Carroll, and I'm owner of Riverside Motel. My comment is that, first of all, when the city was notified of this issue, because we maintain our portion every spring, and we watch it throughout the season, and we just, two years ago, replaced all of the docks. So the city itself has been extremely on the ball for moving forward when they saw the severity of the problem that it could create. But from my standpoint, I just want to point out, I am an owner of Riverside Motel, but I lease the property of the docks and that portion, the boardwalk, from you, the city. So I just wanted on the record that when they do the repairs, that everything is secure and placed back the way that it should be, just like if you were on highway and you did road work and you hit somebody's property, or you rented somebody's property, then it is placed back in the manner which is secure, and that there would not be any liability for the city, either from what Spicer is going to do for the cement, and/or the boards that are going to be moved, or the docks that have just had $5,000 for three here.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions, your staff? Shaw, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of authorizing staff to work with the LRVOI on city CSO. City manager has pursuing options to resolve the situation with one remaining combined sewer overflow. He has met with representatives of Manistee County, Manistee Township, Pala Township, Dronik Township, Village of Eastlake, and the Little River Ban of Ottawa Indians. Each entity has pledged letters of support. In addition, the LRVOI has offered the possibility of accepting the overflow for treatment. The city manager is requesting authorization from council to work in partnership with the LRVOI to investigate if it's feasible to use their sanitary sewer collection system and treatment facility as part of the solution to eliminate the city's remaining CSO. Is there a motion to take action to authorize staff to work with the appropriate representatives?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, supported by Councilmember Smith, to authorize staff to work with the Little River Ban of Ottawa Indians. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to say, I think the closing of the CSO is a long overdue issue, and it should be urgent. Collaboration with townships and other forms of government, I think, is a cost-effective and meaningful way to go about the project, so I commend the process. And I also want to say, thank you, City Manager, in the collaboration between those townships and those villages and in the Little River Ban of Ottawa Indians. It wasn't too long ago that we may not have had some of that collaboration. It's nice to see that we're able to build some of those bridges. I would like, if the city manager could explain a little bit what is entailed with working with the tribe and what are some of those ideas to take over that overflow? Well, they expressed an interest in at least exploring the extension of their sanitary sewer line. And I had two discussions with them, like, just the way I feel, I'm very blunt, very open and honest, and I said, "The idea scares me because of the potential loss for city customers." And so I told them that, in my estimation, to move forward, we have some kind of agreement in place that wherever they come from, which is out by Meyer, and if they want to bring it to our CSO, that they'd have to agree not to accept any customers or go after any customers in the city in that length, that they couldn't extend it past the CSO point, that if they weren't part of the final solution, we'd have to turn a valve and shut it off, and if they were part of the final solution, they could still accept overflow. And then finally, that they would have to, we would have to get buy-in from the DEQ, because we have a permit to treat that, and if it's not treated at our plant, we would have to get their buy-in. Now certainly, they can't accept anywhere near the overflow models, but they're looking at some additional expansion at their plant, and this might be perfect timing. But they're at least willing to want to sit down and talk about it, and in the first blush of it, they said they could agree to those stipulations, and we'll see as we move forward. I also, last Friday, I met with Tim Irwin from AES and asked for his help in pursuing this effort. He's got a lot of ideas that we're going to follow up on, we're getting some information so that he can assist the city in the resolution of its CSO. You've answered all the questions that I've ever had for extending that and just knowing that there'll be assurances about customers and usage and stuff, so thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Shaw, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of a contract Sixth Avenue Pump Station and Riverbank Sewer Project. The Sixth Avenue Pump Station and Riverbank Sewer Project includes replacing a section of the North Interceptor sewer line and replacement of the existing Sixth Avenue Pump Station. The section of the Interceptor being replaced is currently supported by piles, is surcharged with sewage, and is in poor condition. The new gravity sewer will be protected by a steel sheet pile wall. The pump station has exceeded its design life and is under capacity. The Michigan Department of Environmental Quality has required its upgrade as part of the Jocelyn Code Part 41 permit. A new forest main has been added to the project to deliver sewage from the pump station to the Interceptor sewer on River Street. The following bids were received. Davis Construction for $2,204,005. Team Elmers for $2,018,957. Fleyce-Vanderburg Construction for $2,74,036. Jackson Murkey Contractors for $2,152,445. Grand River Construction for $2,192,928. Milk Bacher &amp; Sons Incorporated $2,490,730. Essential effort was put forward with low bidder to reduce the project cost. Addendum number three reflects $229,410 and reduced contract costs resulting in a low bid amount of $1,772,995, which is being recommended by staff. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. Proceeds from the 2015 bond sale will fund the project. Is there a motion for council to take action to award the contract?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Woodliff, to award the contract with the addendum number three to low bidder Davis Construction, amount of $1,772,995. Is there any further questions or discussion?
I would, I would like to know what we gave up, what was modified in the work to get the lower bid.
Main items, we, there was a combination of some things the city is going to be providing. One of those is the pump that was bought, I think, a year ago, and we're going to utilize. So the bids were received with the idea that the contractor would supply the pump and do all the pumping of the job. In addition to that, they also have to assume committee requirements, they need to be around 24/7. And so that's built into, that was built into the bid. And so when we sat down and negotiated, one of the things we said, that we said, and speaking, working with the city and staff, was, if we, if we supply the pump, does that save any money? And we, the city has staff that is working at the plant, they're in the city, they're around, and they don't have, they don't have to actually sit there and babysit it, but they're in, in the area, and with, with the... And with the pumps, they have call-up alarms on, they'll call if there's any trouble. There'll be two pumps, there's always a backup as well, so you're really trying to deal with a pump that's clogged while the other backup is covering. But there's a lot of costs associated with their people being here on weekends, for the most part, is what's one of the driving factors. So that was one item. The city said, "We can provide some time as needed to go to the pump and check on it or answer an alarm call," and with the pump itself, save some dollars, so that was one item. Probably the biggest driving factor was the sheet pile depth. And so the Corps of Engineers is very involved with the design process, and we have to meet a code in putting the sheet wall depths. And we had some soil borings that were taken, and there's a lot of math and things that go into it. Basically, we came up with a design working with a steel supplier that had the sheet depth set at about 40 feet, or 45 feet, I'm sorry. And what we did is we went back and we said, "Okay, where's all, where's a lot of the dollars, where can we save some money?" And what we basically went back to is the sheeting depth, and we looked a lot closer at analyzing it. Quite honestly, you know, we're conservative in how we approach some of these things, and when the bids came in, they were high, we go back and what we call value engineering, looked a lot closer at everything on the job. But the sheets, we found with a soil coefficient assumption, we talked to the Corps and said, "Hey, we think based on some of these borings and some borings for the, under the bridge," which we kind of pulled off in the 50s, said, "You know, we think there's some room to tighten this coefficient up and shorten the sheets." And we went back and forth with the Corps and bottom line is we ended up able to shorten the sheets up some from the original proposal. The sheet length now is very comparable to what's adjacent to it. And so we're still very comfortable with the design. There's probably a little bit less conservativeness in the whole, in the whole plan, but we're very comfortable that there will be no, you know, that it will last longer than any of us here. It'll be a 50-year-plus design, and it worked out, that's where we could save some money. And we had to work with the contractor and different things to figure out those dollars, but those are the main areas. I'm not sure if I missed anything, Jeff, but...
Just the barricades.
Oh, then traffic control. We had a lot of traffic control, and the city said we could, you know, we could handle putting out the barricades, and so that saves some money. Those are the, but the drivers, probably the sheeting and the pumping, are the savings.
I believe the original estimate was about $160,000 or, or...
1.6 million. Yeah. So when we did the bond originally, if you recall, this was before we were involved in the design, and when Spicer came on with the design, a lot of this was already permitted, and the plan was to use the existing forest main, 70-year-old cast iron forest main underneath the river that's in the tunnel, that's about 100-plus years old. And we were kind of uncomfortable with that, actually, we were very uncomfortable with it. We really wanted to look at another option of bringing in a new forest main. We're going to have new pumps, new hydraulics, and we're just a little bit nervous about using that old forest main. And so we actually added into the contract, after the bond was sold, the whole new forest main that we're drilling into the river. And so that was another portion of what drove up, you know, some of the costs. Even with that, we still had some higher, you know, bids than we were hoping for, but, you know, we were able to work, still were able to work in the forest main within the bond amount, so.
Is there going to be a corresponding increase in cost to public works in payroll for our role in this now?
With the pumping?
Yeah, I mean, with the people available and all that, so I mean, is it a matter of we're going to not pay so much from one pot of money, but we're going to pay a difference from another source?
The only extra money that it would cost us is if there was a pump alarm after hours and we had to call somebody on overtime. The option, the other option was to pay the contractor to have somebody on-site or available 24/7, so this is a lot less risky than that.
Any other questions? Shaw, can you please take your role?
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A rather part of each council meeting is reported from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we will hear from Ms. Molly Westone of Great Lakes Assessing, who reports on activities of the Assessor's office.
Good evening. You have it. Welcome to my very first report. I think I put together what you want, but if we don't cover what you want, then I certainly will get you the information or I can change it for next year. Our taxable value this year is $186,707,047. Look at the overall, your biggest change has been in your personal property with industrial abatements for the personal property coming online this year and for the small business taxpayers. Moving to the next page. Here's your assessed value change. That flows hand in hand because we have two systems that run simultaneously. We have the assessed value, which we've always had, and then with the implementation of proposal A, we have the taxable value. But our assessed value is climbing once again, so that's very good when you look at the difference between the personal from 15 to 16, and then look at your overall, we are gaining ground. Our markets are improving. Our March Board of Review this year, we had, the big thing is the veterans exemptions. In 2014, we processed 13. 2015, we processed 19. 2016, we processed 27. Our goal was, at the end of March Board of Review, to give you fairly close numbers with the veterans. We sent them all-out letters in December with their application to fill out, to get back to us. We sent out all of the hardships that we knew of, the application, your new guidelines, so that they could get them back for March Board of Review, so that when we were done, we were a little closer. Then we have your taxable value percentage changes. Your industrial, the large percentage is for your personal properties and your tribunals on Morton Salt that we settled last year. And then your personal property, which is the industrial personal property exemption and the small business taxpayer exemption. And then the assessed shows basically the same thing. But your residential went up, so that was good. You have your taxable value by class. Our residential class is the largest slice of your pie on your taxable and your assessed. I have, when I came last summer, I worked with Ed on our tribunal appeals. They have been a big issue. We wiped out 11 tribunal appeals in a very short period of time. I've worked with Ed, he's developed an Excel spreadsheet that we go through each appeal on now. It is the total revenue they want, reduction, the tax dollars you will lose if we fight it, how long our payback will be. And so that way, you know, we know whether we need to aggressively defend or try to stipulate and settle. So it, I think it's been working good. I've enjoyed being here. I enjoyed looking out my window the other day and seeing the shit come through. I've never seen that, so I have all sorts of first-time experiences over here. Any questions?
I've got a comment. A friend of mine recently received a disability rating from the VA and gave me a very favorable review of your service to him in getting his application filed, so thank you.
Well, we have two coming, two July Board of Review. They missed March, they just made it. So we almost have $1 million in taxable value exempted with the veterans. So we don't meet the 5% criteria for the state of Michigan, though. It was long overdue.
I've had one of our Bayous landlords, as I shared with you before, and I'll show it to everybody else, who is very impressed and considered you to be very fair and upfront and had nothing but praises. So thank you.
I want to thank you for the report. This is very clear, and it's not something that I've seen over the past few years presenting at council, so thank you for your efforts on that.
I have to give my Molly, my other Molly, credit for that because I sat her down and said, "I have to make a report." This is what I want you to say, and so she did it for me.
She's very gracious of you.
She's one of the seven in Cadillac that helps us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to comment too. Molly, the idea to go into a contracted services for assessing was a big decision we made, and I feel like our services, not only sustained but improved, and I want to thank you for that. It's always a challenge for us to make decisions to reduce headcount, but you've made that decision well received from this group, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Well, thank you. It has been, I really enjoyed, I enjoy everybody in the building, and I enjoy, I enjoy shopping here at lunchtime, so I have fun in Manistee. We're doing all of the condos this year, so if you're a condo owner, you will get a postcard from us and you'll see us.
Should they be looking forward to it?
Everybody loves their assessor, come on.
I appreciate the report, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comment. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizen comment and municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Mister, please come forward, state your name and address.
Bob Marco, 432 Cedar Street. About seven, eight months ago, this council formed an ad hoc committee for the deer problem here in the city. Well, it's not getting any easier. The deer are out roaming right now. They're wiping out all the plants in our neighborhood. I've talked to every, every property owner. In February, we had two deer impaled on a fence, blocked me in the corner of Fourth and Cedar. They had to be put out of their misery. So it's not getting any better. Is this a dead issue with the council right now? No pun intended.
I think as far as a deer cull, based on the fact that our insurance carrier will not cover us if we proceed with a cull, I think council is still looking at other options. And we went through, eliminated, made it so you're not supposed to feed the deer. We have put out on the city website options to help, ideas to give city residents on how to deter the deer.
I have at least eight or nine deer every night in my yard. Every night, I can go out on my back deck and they're not afraid of me, they just sit there, stare at me and start eating the plants. We have to do something because it's not going to get any easier. Last year, we had, at least in our neighborhood, five or six fawns. This year, we're going to drop more fawns. And if it's not taken care of, I can guarantee you that some of the citizens are going to start taking it into their own hands, whether it's right or wrong. I can guarantee that. I've already heard some rumblings on it, so we've got to do something. This couldn't have been taken care of a year ago when it was first brought up, but nothing was done. The USDA won't do it. Somebody has to do it because it's not getting any easier. Deer went through the Methodist Church window last year, front window, did about $5,000 worth of damage. So I'm hoping that this council will take another look at it and come up with something. The ad hoc committee, I'm sure, is, we're not going to meet anymore, we made our recommendations, and I guess it's up to the council at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, we'll move on to officials, city clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer?
Nothing.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public executive director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW?
Just one quick item. Some of you may have noticed that we're in the middle of our trash hall. There's actually not as much out there citywide as what we've had in the past, so crews are working hard and they're actually getting ahead of schedule. We get a lot of calls from residents wondering why the trucks just went by and they hadn't got their stuff out in the timeframe. So when we get caught up, we'll move ahead and try to get some of it, some of it collected, but we'll go back and make sure that we go through the zones on the dates that we published. So just wanted to put that out there.
Hey, Jeff, are the, your crews going to be out grinding branches still?
Yep, we have. I don't remember if that was this Friday that we started or the following Friday, but we are collecting the brush list, and we also are starting the Tuesday collection of the leaf bags as well.
Thank you.
And if somebody can't wait, we've got two bins over in our recycling center where they can put small brush and clippings as well.
If we have brush, should we be hauling it or do you just have a route?
We do, there's enough of the lawn bags that we do, we drive the entire city on Tuesdays. On Fridays, the brush tends to go up and down, so longstanding practice is to call in, get put on a list, and then the list is compiled so that we're efficiently going around. And it's a continuous debate on whether or not, if they see a pile and know somebody called in, whether they should pick that up anyway. And so last year, we started picking them up anyway. But we'd appreciate if people would call so we can, we know if we need to go longer than a day or if we need to jump on it earlier, and we also base the routing on that.
City engineer, anything else?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Anything else, city assessor?
Nothing.
Councilmember Beaton?
Welcome spray.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Building, Your Honor.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Well, I thank Chief Bachman and his crew for taking care of some of the weight that's been out there. We had quite a haul last week.
Mayor Potem Gustad?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I just have one thing, I just want to remind council or bring to council attention, if they're unaware, that if we have questions or concerns related to the city services or departments, we do have a council policy that says that those questions and concerns need to be brought to the city manager. I know on the community side that we live in and our familiarity with city employees, sometimes it makes it easier just to drop in and ask and direct those questions to our city employees, but that kind of undermines our city manager's authority and violates our council policy, so I just wanted to remind city council that if you've got questions or concerns related to city activities, please direct them to the city manager.
I couldn't agree more, come, Mayor. And I know we've talked about this in the past, when direction is given to staff on behalf of a council member, that's one council member, and if we're going to give direction to staff or city workers, that needs to be a collective discussion and agreed upon, then direction, reset policy, not direction for staff. So I think it's just, it's a good thing to be reminded of and continue to remind each other of that and not to, not to be out there doing that. It's difficult for the staff enough, it's difficult for the city manager to manage it as we move forward. They don't need seven more leaders telling them what to do, I think so. Thank you for reading that out.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn to the budget workshop.
Can I have a five-minute recess first?
Five minutes.
Now, with the budget, just as an example, some monies that we had budgeted for Morton Salt Field, that they withdrawn. We had some, you know, there's a pool of money there, not a lot, but that's kind of where we are at the end of the year. We've realized some savings during the year. savings during the year that we can work towards that, putting it to the Riverwalk. Maybe we might not have to use some of those other areas like those improvements at the Hennan Beach.
That line item is gone, though. So, there's nothing in there stipulating that there's money set aside for that, as there has been.
Are you talking about next year, this year?
The budget we're discussing.
Jeff, did you want to?
Probably a month, six weeks ago, we submitted a purchase plan to purchase one large and two small canopy overhangs. And essentially, think of the shade structure that's down at the new Lighthouse Park, the blue structure. Instead of doing bricks and mortar and shingles down at Fifth Avenue, we can buy two of the small, two of the three smaller ones that are in the plan and one of the larger ones, and then pour the concrete pads. That would all equal that $20,000. That purchase has been held back to see if and how and when council felt about the funding for the Riverwalk. And if you so choose to pull that $20,000, put it towards the Riverwalk fix in addition to the fund balance, that's an option. If not, the reason why the $20,000 is not in next year's budget is because at the time, we planned on spending it in the current budget and fulfilling that project.
Didn't we have, we had money set aside in the Fifth Avenue project, though. Was $20,000 last year that we put in?
It was over, I think it was $26,000 total. And we have put in $6,000 into the concrete sidewalks. So, that portion is completed. The remaining $20,000, what I intended to do was to build the shade structures and pour the concrete pads down.
So, that's the $20,000 that you're going to hold?
That's the $20,000 that's available today.
Right.
If council says, "Please proceed with that," then we would proceed and have that installed out of this current budget. But then, the full $80,000 for the Riverwalk repair would probably need to come out of the fund balance.
So, we're just trying to evaluate the priorities because it's kind of a moving target. And as I said, you know, coming towards the end of the budget year, we've realized some savings, and we can put together some money and maybe do both of the projects without severely impacting the fund balance. Lynn, what is the timeframe on the Riverwalk to start to finish on that?
The engineers are in design right now. The intention is to submit for permits and contract bids in May and have that awarded the, we're looking at the second meeting in May.
Seventeenth?
The second council meeting in May is when we intend to have the contract before you, which would allow for construction to occur in June. And then, we hope to be finished by the Fourth of July.
So, is it, if we do have savings on the Riverwalk, can we do Fifth Avenue this year?
It's just a matter of where you pull from.
No, I mean, if you get that $20,000 that you're holding right now, if that, some portion of that comes out, can we do some construction at Fifth Avenue?
The, yes.
Am I making sense of that?
Yes, I'm just trying to think through that. The finance director was looking for larger pieces of money that were available when the question was asked, "Where are we going to find this money?" And he said, "The only big thing that we haven't actually committed the funds to yet is that $20,000." And so, we can either plan on taking $80,000 out of the general fund and pay for the Riverwalk and do the $20,000 improvements at Fifth Avenue. Or we could, or you could convert that money into the Riverwalk and then presumably only spend 60 out of the general fund, plus whatever savings we have internally.
I have a question. You won't like my question, sorry, Jeff. Can you give up your electric fence and put those funds toward the Riverwalk repair?
The fence would cover a portion, about half of it, because half of it's funded by water and sewer funds. The other half is coming out of parks and street departments. So, that would be about 50% of the savings.
Okay.
No money appropriated for Lighthouse Park? How does that figure in? Do we have, are we going to have any money for Lighthouse Park? What's going to happen with that? We just going to leave it with the fence, or? Fence, about the best option we have right now. It's not, you know, obviously what everybody would like. But when we were having those discussions internally, we had, you know, I, my position was I prioritized the Riverwalk repair as the highest. And then, in terms of Lighthouse Park, there's two other playgrounds in close proximity to there. And I thought that we could put that off until we could find some funding for that. So, it was just a matter of prioritizing without coming up with any extra out of the fund balance. Because then, it's about a $35,000 fix for Lighthouse Park.
To remove the soil and protect the soil. And then, the rest of it, we would try to do in-house within our staff and funding.
And also, we have trouble keeping the fence up. Is there, is there any signage that explains why the fence is up?
There's nothing out there right now, no. There was just some keep-out signs on it.
Should we be having something or just throwing it out there?
We certainly could.
And people, when people are pushing the fence down to get in, they're obviously don't know there could be a risk involved. Indeed, DPW has strengthened that fence, the front area that was always getting pushed over. I had them go down there and make some improvements to that. So, that's much, much more secure than it was before. When you talk about taking some funds from water and sewer to cover part of this cost, you're not talking about funds generated by what people pay for water and sewer rates to build a maintenance fund for the system, are you?
The, when we, the internal budgets, all of the things like the public works, everything that happens in that facility, it gets prorated amongst the different departments that use it. So, the admin costs get prorated between general fund departments and the utility enterprise funds. So, something that improves it like that gets proportionally split between the different departments.
Because in the past, money's been borrowed from water and sewer temporarily to fund other things. You know, talking about borrowing?
That would be a question for the finance director.
Okay.
But for this, if you're talking specifically about the gate?
I'm talking about the Riverwalk. Jeff?
There's no money coming from water and sewer for the Riverwalk?
No.
Okay, that's a whole, okay.
No, the question was, in the proposed budget, there's money for a new gate for the Public Works Yard. And the question by councilwoman Beaton was, "If you gave that up, does that free up money that could be used for the Riverwalk?" My response was, "Some of that, that's proposed to be paid for out of the general fund, possibly could. But the portion that comes out of the water and sewer would not be eligible to pay for Riverwalk improvements."
Well, we kind of admitted ourselves last year that we're going to do the Fifth Avenue.
Is it normal practice to take out a line item, budgeted line item, under the idea that you think you're going to do the project so you don't need to roll the money over? Shouldn't the money be rolled over into the next year and stayed there until the money is actually spent? Once the money disappears on a line item, it's gone. And if you don't do the project, it's not like, "Oh, well, let's put that money back." That money is gone forever. I know as the Parks Commission, we were very prudent in making recommendations on what to do with that money as money was added and stuff. There were grandiose plans to spend all kinds of money, and you go for grants and things like that. And we resisted making recommendations on any of that. And some of that money that was supposed to be spent was on the things that Jeff's talking about. But there were also other items like the wall that was supposed to be repaired and the cement slabs on top of the wall that were supposed to be repaired. You know, you're getting ready to redo your lighthouse. You're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo your lighthouse. Now, there's being publicized that there's going to be lighthouse tours, and Manistee North Pierhead Light is one of those lights on that tour. So, now, you're inviting all kinds of people to come down and view the light and all that. And you're going to run past that piece of property that by consensus looks terrible. There's not one, one single person that's ever come in front of council that says, "You know what? It looks great down there. It's just fine." Council's taken bus tours around there. They've looked at that piece of property. Everybody says, "Yeah, it needs to be fixed." There've been previous council members on this council that have fought hard for it.
I appreciate your comments. But as a council discussion, yeah, things happen. We have an $80,000 repair that we need to do to the Riverwalk. Unfortunately, sometimes that comes at a costly.
I understand. And you have repairs to do down there also. There's cement slabs down there that are askew. And if they get knocked off and fall on somebody, you know...
So, you know, the question's been brought up. Where do we want to get this $80,000 from this fund? Do we want to take it all from general fund? Do we want to utilize other funds from the $20,000 from the Fifth Avenue?
I think, firstly, I see some things in the budget, such as an electric fence, a new door for the marina. I mean, there's things out there. Gee, do we have to do that now? Or can we find something that has to be done that just costs us more in the long run? I think there's areas where we can get savings. It's just a matter of, you know, what's the, what's the top priority? I just want to remind council that both the improvements at the beach and also the Riverwalk are planned out of the current year's budget, not from the proposed budget that you're discussing tonight.
Thank you. All right, getting back to the next year's budget, are there any other questions from council?
I have a question about appropriations. As you talked about the Manistee Saints, I hear, I don't know much about the Manistee Saints field. We give them $6,000, looks like. But I understand we can't play on it, whereas I couldn't go up there with, couldn't have a game out here. It's supposed to be for them. Could somebody fill me out exactly what that is? I just hear rumors.
Well, one of the projects that I had the accessory want to do when I first got here was just to double-check that all the properties that were owned by a nonprofit were done correctly. Because other communities that I've served in, there've been some issues where just because you're a nonprofit doesn't mean that they're excluded from property count. And she found, she found one instance, and that's Hammond Field. We're working on that. How can we resolve that? And since then, it's come to my attention that Manistee Saints lock that field. And if they lock the field and limit access only to their organization, that property has to be taxed. Because it's not open to the public, and it's not considered public property anymore, even though the city owns it. So, we're working to meet with those individuals to find out how we can resolve that and to see what options that we have.
What do we give them $6,000 for?
I don't have a whole lot of history. I do know that it used to be closer to $9,000 to $10,000 a year, two to three years ago. And the way that, the way that it was handled is the Saints would contract out for grass maintenance, fertilizing, irrigation work, and ground maintenance on the diamond and stuff. And then, would submit those bills to my department to approve and have paid for. And that stuff was done under a line item that was in the Parks budget. Personally, I didn't feel comfortable approving purchases made by somebody else. So, in last year's budget or the current budget, we moved that, moved it and changed it to an appropriation. And so, to my knowledge, and this would be a better question for Ed, but to my knowledge, just like all the other appropriations, once they're in the budget, a check is cut, and then they're free to spend that as they choose.
It's my understanding, and game is to provide a higher level of field maintenance than the city normally provides for other parks because of their needs?
I don't know if time will allow, but I'd really like to hear from them. Of all the times that I've been to council meetings and long before being a councilperson, I have never heard any presentation by the Saints. I've never heard a thing from them. So, you know, what do they do with the money? Why do we do it? And most of all, why can't my grandkids go play on it? I mean, it is a city-owned property, isn't it?
Yes, yeah. And that's, and that's the issue. It became, you know, I became aware of the fact that they were locking the gates and denying access to the general public. And so, that creates a problem in terms of it's not open to the public, and even though it's owned by the city, then it would have to be taxed. And the tax would, it'd be, have to decide whether it's responsible to the city or the person that's using that and denying access. So, that's a discussion I have to have with the user group. And the city's working on getting that meeting together.
Catholic Central does use that diamond for their varsity baseball team. And there has been a lot of improvements that I feel since I played way back when.
That was a few years ago, Mike.
It was, before baseball. But they have, they have made a lot of improvements to the infield and fancy scoreboards and such. It should be open to the public.
Right. So, we'll have that discussion, and the city's reaching out to the appropriate partners.
Since we're on appropriations, and I know I brought up the Alliance for Economic Success before, and I know we've got a three-year contract with that organization, even though there's an opt-out clause in it. But I go back to 2-1-1. We did not have a contract for 2-1-1. The county appropriates money for 2-1-1. And I don't see the value of the city paying $3,000 on top of what we already pay through county taxes for 2-1-1 services. I don't consider anything too small to look at or too large. I think, you know, when we look at the budget process, and it's as tight as it is, we need to look wherever we can get some savings to apply it to those things that mean the most and part of it. Certainly, quality of life, as well as infrastructure and providing services to the city. But I would like to revisit those every year as we go through the process of doing the budget to make sure what we're spending the money for brings value to the citizens here in the city of Manistee.
One thing I would suggest to council, maybe going forward, is that we have these organizations make formal requests for appropriation and have a business plan that will support their request. So, council knows exactly what the money's being used for and can kind of gauge the value of that appropriation. A suggestion, if that's something council wants to do, we can put that in the plan.
Let me look at their proposed budget, and they're proposing even with $3,000. From the city, appropriation allows $2,000. We do provide, I think, a valuable service to citizens. I guess, I'm a little concerned at this point as far as the budgeting process. If we're looking at reducing appropriation, it's giving them a little bit more notice that, hey, make sure we're looking at reducing your funding. So, they can plan appropriately.
When I look at AES and what we, the groups we made them jump through to give us, talk about this higher level of service that we get and have them define that for us, what that all meant. 2-1-1's also funded by the county. I don't see that coming from them. Are we getting a higher level of service from 2-1-1? I don't know.
I think if you look at when she gives her annual report, there's been an increase in their services.
I like the idea the city manager brought, to bring our business plan in front of us. I agree with that. So, we can judge if they're going to get $2,000, $3,000, or $1,000 or nothing. So, rather than just coming in with a flat figure. I think that's something we should, we should look at. I agree with that. And I, you know, I think a lot of communities in the county get services from AES, they get services from two-one-one, uh, and, and from other organizations. But again, my question is, what is the city getting extra, uh, since we pay county taxes also for the services that we're receiving when we're doing separate appropriations, uh, to these organizations? There should be a real added value that's tangible that we can see. Uh, so when people ask, you know, what are, what are we getting for this amount of money? There was a reasonable explanation, uh, to me, and, and saying it's difficult to quantify, means there's really not a good answer for what we're doing. You know, we need a good concrete answer on some of these things to spend the money.
I have a question.
People expect that.
For other, for the other council members, have any of you tried calling two-on-one?
I tried calling two-on-one the other day. Uh, three days ago.
And what was your experience like?
I was put on hold, and I, for about ten minutes, and then I was told I could, uh, leave a number and didn't call them back.
I've also called two-on-one about three times. And, um, once was over the weekend, which is not a good time to call. Uh, once I too was put on hold, and the third time I was, the third time I got somebody, I did talk to them for a while, but all they could really do was to direct me to a website. Not really sure what the value is. Maybe I'm missing something. I know it's not a lot of money, but we do have county taxes for it too.
I'm supportive of the idea of, of, you know, a business plan for some of these, for all the appropriations and, um, you know, we've got to have hard discussions, maybe prior to them even making it to the budget. Um, and maybe that, that would give these people an opportunity, or these organizations an opportunity to seek out funding elsewhere if they know they're not going to be in. But, you know, we are kind of the twelfth hour of this budget, Susan, and, um, I know we have a penny counts for this budget, and it has for every year I've served on council, but, um, I like the idea of, of, you know, maybe, uh, working collaborative with these offline prior to even making it to the budget, and to make sure that we're putting our resources where they need to be.
I also like the recommendation that you talked about last session was looking to the future. We should be looking at what's going to happen next year, and we should be talking about that. If I hear Mr. Bradford or understand Mr. Bradford's, the way he indicates in the budgets, there could be some tight times coming up. We need to be looking at those now and trying to increase revenue and do whatever we can. I like your idea, I support that, and I would like to see council get on board. And I don't know how we would do that, when we would fit it in, but I think it needs to be done. I don't think there's anything wrong with looking ahead and starting that process right now. Um, I've read where some areas even do two-year budgets. That doesn't mean the second year won't change, but they do, they look at two years, so they don't run their problems.
And I think, I think when we look at the budget, and especially with the projections for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, uh, and I see some cost, uh, in there, and I see some serious escalation of cost, uh, in there, uh, then I understand why there's five times unsustainable mentioned in this budget. And I'll go along with Councilman Zalutsky on what he said last time. I'd rather step off curb this year than off a cliff next year and not be able to do things. And we do have to be forward-thinking. The revenue's not growing. We have services we want to provide. Um, we need to prioritize what the most essential services are. We have to look at these things incrementally. When we look at retirement system mirrors, we're one point three three million dollars underfunded right now. And, and when I see the increase to cost projected, um, is, is the intent to cover that unfunded liability also? Or is it just the ongoing cost of the system? There's some alarming numbers in there. But I, I just get curious. So then we talk about equipment. Uh, last, this year, we had budgeted for an eighteen thousand dollar solar camera. We didn't buy that camera. We were budgeting now for a twenty-eight thousand dollar camera next year. And according to Mr. Bradford, uh, if we don't spend something that we had a line item for this year, that money goes back into the general fund. Uh, is, is that true, or is it spent on something else because it's available?
Well, it goes back into the general fund, or into the fund balance if it's not utilized. Now, there's going to be some exceptions where, and we talked about, about the Riverwalk, that we might have to prioritize money that we have budgeted and reallocate. But usually, if there's no emergency, that, that kink comes up and we elect not to make that purchase, it just goes back in.
So it's not, it's not spent for non-emergency just because we decided to buy something else?
No, it's always, we always look at prioritization, where do we need the money? And if something comes up that's a higher priority for some reason or another, and we make that conscious decision, we do it.
One of the things I'd like to say about the budget is that we changed, we changed the format, um, and there was more narrative in the budget, made it a little bit more direct. As we've talked about before, the word unsustainable came up five times in the narrative. And if, when I look at a line item like Alliance for Economic Success, and I remember the work session that we had with them about our goals, I really think that anything that was labeled unsustainable should be part of their goals. So I don't know if you've had time to go back and tie those in, but I would be, I think it's paramount that we're all on the same page so that we can not go into a total unsustainable mode.
Well, a couple of comments. Are you referring to having AES work on those council goals?
I think it would be prudent to make sure that they're in there in some way.
To that end, I am meeting with them on Friday, you know, their matchup, the council's adopted goals and strategies, and see where AES, um, fits into that. I've already gone through a review, and I've highlighted the ones that, that I think are directly related to efforts that AES can undertake, and I've prioritized those, and that's going to be part of our discussion on Friday, uh, so they can put those, put their efforts into those stated goals and objectives of the council. So, you know, we're working to that direction. In terms of the unsustainable, certainly the word was used five times in the context of the current, uh, goals and objectives and priorities of council. If those change, maybe the budget is not so unsustainable. It's just a matter of what the priorities are and where, where, where you want to direct the money. So, uh, in, in short, if council priorities change, the, the budget may be more sustainable.
Do you believe it's prudent to plan for the worst and hope for the best?
I wouldn't go that drastic, but I think you're going to have to meet somewheres in the middle. Because if you always plan on the worst, you'll never take care of everything you need to take care of. If you put money away in case of this might happen, it never happens, and the likelihood isn't that that would happen, then you're shortchanging your, your, uh, system, yeah?
It's kind of what the general fund is, and ensuring that we have a good general fund balance, and hopefully those. Any other questions, concerns, issues?
I, for what it's worth, obviously I work at the Oaks. There's about three hundred acres out there in Renaissance Park. That is full of wood. Uh, I'm saying, what about taking some of it, doing a select cut? Because it's good for the, the forestry, and applying the money towards something in the parks.
See you then.
Those are the kind of things that, when I've said we should start researching ideas for revenue generation. Now, that's not necessarily sustainable, but there are opportunities to, every five years or whatever, do a cut and, and, and generate additional revenue. And I didn't even think about that.
I didn't either.
And so I do think there's some opportunities for us, uh, as a council to start looking for additional revenue sources that, like, ideas just like that.
There's a huge value in lumber today.
Well, and, and it's good for the, it's good for the forest.
It strengthens the, the remaining forests, it does.
I don't know, just to throw my idea out.
But, yeah.
I know it doesn't fit here in this budget right now, but.
It's something we can look at next year, and as you say, if it generates additional income, looking at where we're lacking in our parks budget.
Well, the local high schools have done that, Manistee I fairly, they have sold their, uh, clear cut and generated money.
I'm not saying clear cut.
Or track, not, not clear cut, but select, select cut. But they raise money for their track, uh, fairly, raise money for their school systems.
Renewable resource.
I think for me, the overall, the budget, it's not, uh, one hundred percent perfect. Uh, the, the only two outstanding issues that I feel are, are before us right now is where, where do we land with funding the boardwalk repairs? And what happens at Fifth Avenue Beach? And, uh, I can live with where we've landed, for the most part, in some of these areas, but, um, there are roughly a hundred thousand dollars worth of, or eighty to a hundred and ten, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars worth of additional costs that we haven't found a home for, or found a resource for, so.
Really, have them doing those repairs on this fiscal year budget, correct?
Correct, yeah, correct. This, this fiscal year, we would be doing those, uh, Riverwalk repairs. And, uh, again, if we can find the money through savings as we get a little closer to the end of the fiscal year, we certainly embark on those Fifth Avenue improvements. Now, even, you know, we, we looked at, um, with Ed, you know, when we were looking at maybe a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, for the Riverwalk we care, you know, although he wasn't extremely happy about it, he thought that we had to take all of that out of the fund balance we could and cut it a little shorter than he would want, and it's below the twenty percent that the council would like, but it's doable. So, I mean, it's conceivably, we could do both projects yet this fiscal year without severely impacting our fund balance. And there's a, you know, again, because it's very fluid, there might be, there might be opportunities to lessen the impact on the fund balance. If council wishes to have both projects undertaken this fiscal year.
Fifth Avenue is, um, it, it's been dilapidated for many years. Especially if the light house, uh, is going to be painted and tours, you really need to, uh, look at that. Is there, is there a way to, uh, out of the gas and oil front, take, remove some interest? We, we did last year for the streets, fund that project?
Anything's possible, because, uh, right now, we're going with the council guidelines of, of the four percent.
Yes, I would hate to see that because it's not producing. There's not any more royalties coming in, and we've already impacted future purchasing power of it. I would hate to continue to dip into that revenue source for the future.
I think the value of that fund that went down here just a while ago, quite effectively, the oil?
It, 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 very, what the market, market has gone down to the valuation of.
But that's the best it will, that's the stock. That's not true.
Like, what we can sell the, the oil for is different than what the investment is, is generating. So investments are in the stock market, where the oil, oil royalties are generated from where gas prices are. And from a hundred and twenty dollars to twenty dollars, there's a significant difference in what we can sell those perils for, so.
I just, you know, was brought up a week, you know, with the, with the well shut down, we're not generating any royalties to replenish that fund. So that's a, you know, concerning situation.
I, I think we committed last year, as part of our goals, at Fifth Avenue.
Yeah.
I, I, I think we should stand behind that.
Actually, I think we committed two years ago when Ed, Cody sat down there and got us off and set aside that twenty-five dollar, twenty-five thousand. It was two years ago, wasn't it?
Yes.
And then, yeah, so I agree, I think those two projects are, are, in my opinion, the priority, priority, two priority project, Fifth Avenue and the Riverwalk, but, um, you know.
Again, that's, I understand.
We certainly can, we can make that happen.
If that's council's wishes.
That's my, my two cents for it, so.
Yeah.
You know, the projections show quite a grain going forward on, uh, the reserve fund, because of revenue and because of upcoming expenses and such. So the more we draw it down now, um, the less we'll have in the future. Uh, because we're certainly not putting anything into it. You look at our expenses, we've got a budget that is, that is balanced, uh, but we're borrowing a hundred and some thousand dollars for a front end loader. So we're spending all we've got, plus we're incurring more debt at the same time with this budget. And I understand that departments don't put enough money into the motor pool fund to fund the purchases of the vehicles that they'll be needing over the vehicle lifetime. And maybe we need to rethink that process. It, it should be sort of a self-sustaining fund, uh, that allows us to make purchases and keep the fleet current and such, without having to borrow money every year. We just borrowed money, uh, this year to, to do the two stock lots, so now, now we're going to borrow some more for next year. And the question to me is, are we going to be asking to borrow some more for another purchase next year?
A co, just a comment is that, that, that fund was never set up to be self-sustaining, and maybe it should have, and we can argue that either way. But if we were to raise the, the rates to a point to make that self-sustaining and make sure that there were funds available, that would put a significant, um, it'd have a, a, a very negative impact on our overall operations, because it would be a big hit to the general fund, and it would be hit, a big hit to the other enterprise funds to support those. And I, and right now, I don't think we can afford to do that.
I'm not saying do it right now, but I'm saying, could, could we work towards that on a gradual basis? Because at some point in time, we're going to have to quit borrowing.
But the more that, the more that we put towards making that, um, that fund sustainable, that's going to create more, uh, pressure on our other funds, our general fund. And it means that we can do less out of the general fund, less out of the water fund, less out of the sewer funds, as an example. So it's just a matter of where the priorities are, and as I said before, that, that, uh, certainly the, the staff can craft a budget to match the council priorities, whatever they are.
I have a question for Mr. McCula. On the Fifth Avenue, we, we did a lot of in-house work. How much of the future work could be in-house, or all of it?
On Fifth Avenue?
Yeah.
The, uh, the coats that I have are from the same company that put them up. They would be the same type of construction, only they'd be red in color to match everything else down at that beach. And, uh, our staff would do the concrete work ourselves, kind of like we did at the other place as well. So, um, within that twenty thousand dollars, I believe, that, that's still left in that item. I believe we can get three of those structures put in place.
Well, that would be something to be careful.
Mm-hmm. The, the match plan showed one very large one, I don't remember the size, forty by sixty or thirty by sixty. It's, it's a pretty large.
How big is the one down here?
Uh, that's twenty by twenty.
Okay.
So there would be two, kind of like the cabanas down at, in the Lions area. There's, there would be two small ones about that size, and then there would be one that's, uh, about two to three times bigger than that.
And you feel that would be done on this year's budget yet?
That's what, it's possible, yeah. That's what, it's possible, yeah.
Thank you. So again, for looking at budget for next year, does any council member, or anybody, any changes that was being presented?
A couple of words.
It's a fair budget.
You know, I, I hear, you know, a lot of the concerns and questions and we can certainly start working on, looking at all the organizations that are receiving appropriations, starting to work on a business project, bringing it in front of council and basically, you know, proving why they need the money and why we should continue, the city should continue funding their renovation.
I've made a note to schedule meetings with most representatives and just let the whole direction council, it's kind of the head.
I personally think we should, we should set goals for the appropriation or set guidelines for the appropriations as a whole. What, what do you feel are the core values that should be considered in the appropriations column? And if it's recreation or whatever, we could set guidelines and maybe some of that would help with the people that are funding strategy we have prior to even those, those presentations. But, yeah, I hate to have people just trying to hit it where we target, but if we could set those goals up in advance, they would know that their, their organization would qualify in our guidelines for appropriations.
And looking at, you know, as Councilmember Smith has pointed out, you know, we pay for the city and, and accounting taxes for some of these.
Yeah.
But also, a lot of our services serve the entire county more. If you look at beaches, you could, the Ramsdale, you look at MRA. And what are they doing to help fund themselves in the outcome of years? I know the MRA charges fees and it gets funding from some of the, of other communities. But is that, do they need to do more in that respect? So we're looking for alternative funding.
Yeah, because if they've gotten appropriations now before and haven't had to seek alternative revenue sources, they haven't tried. So not that we don't want them to walk away from those appropriations, hit their quality programs, but we work with them to find funding sources that is sustainable. Just, I mean, you gotta be sustainable.
Several years ago, Friends of the Payne's Pool started that. What have they done since they started that? We're gonna try something different with the Ramsdale. I'm okay with that and giving that an opportunity to work. What I object to is that we are 25% of the population of the county. No other county organizations or government put any extra money in the pot for a couple of these appropriations. And we should be getting some spectacular value for what we're giving them in addition to what they're getting through our accounting taxes also. That's, I mean, that's my whole point. Why are we paying twice? And when you divide the cost by the population in both areas, we're paying substantially more per person than anyone else is in the county for these services.
We should be looking at fees or charging people outside the city and making, and revisiting their fee schedules.
Yeah.
Part and part of the, I'm sorry. A part and part of the budget to me is what we just talked about, is looking forward and starting now to do that. I, I feel comfortable with this budget. If I can start looking forward at what we're going to do in the future. I just feel that's a real important place.
I, I think in, in 2008, when, when we had $800,000 for the Rivers Creek Sewer Project, if we realized it was going to cost us $2 million today, it would have gotten done before. I mean, because it's hindsight 2020, you know, it's like, that's just wonderful, but the escalation of cost and what it's costing us today is, is almost prohibitive. I mean, it drives us further into debt. It's necessary, getting the CSL folks. You know, I'm, I'm not going to say we dragged our feet on that, but it's taken a lot longer than it should have, just as a process. And, and we're still looking, 2020 and the capital improvement program may be needing a bond for retention business. The whole point of Burton and Associates rate study and the rate increases was to collect capital to take care of those costs, not to go out and bond a second time or, or in the future. I mean, we have to look at, you know, what, what we can do. The water rates have gone up from $53 in, in 2008 to $79 and change this year. Typically useful. The revenue rates have gone up. I mean, the mileage has gone down and then back up, but the, the monthly rates have gone up. So people are paying more and more. They're not necessarily making more, they're just paying more. And they're not getting an enhancer and they're getting kind of the same service that, that we're getting. So I look at it and, and if you don't have housing development, if you don't have growth in your tax base, if you don't have other revenue sources, it's tough to keep going with inflation and, and ongoing cost of materials.
So is it safe to say that we are ready to go forward with this current budget on May 5th? And do we need the work session next week? I'm not hearing that we need that work session next week unless I hear anything major.
I just want to make my major objection and I, Ramsdale Theater. I, here we are with a budget that we have to approve on the Ramsdale Theater and I understand the plan. I've not seen any detail from them as to what their goals are. I haven't seen any proposed contract with the new governing board. Haven't seen anything, but yet we're going to approve a budget. So I don't know what your comfort level, the rest of your comfort level is on that, but I, I'm not feel comfortable without seeing some information on what's happening with the governing board on that.
We just went ahead, I mean, just weeks ago, gave council support to go forward with that, these board and their.
Yeah, I don't think they haven't vetted out yet what their plan is.
Right, we're, we're putting the contract for the forest. I just, we're taking a leap of faith, big, big leap.
We're not funding it any more than we funded it initially. We're not funding it anymore.
And we took away their fund, we took $20,000 out of their, out of their fund. No, I understand all of that.
It comes to their, to their, to their, their diamond now, it's under both parts. You know, they, they need to jump in and run and raise some money.
Here's the spot we've heard of.
Yeah.
Well, I think they, they're taking that seriously too. They know, they know it's, it's an issue. And, and again, I think it's one of those cultural cornerstones, no different than our, our beaches or, or, you know, some of the natural resources we have. And just defunding it completely or walking away from it isn't going to do the investment we made 10 years ago when the roof and the HVAC, you know, return anything, not only from a financial standpoint, but from a cultural standpoint too. So it's a challenge and I think they take it seriously too, so.
I did not mean to downplay that, to mention.
No, I.
They, I know these people, I, I, I know they're, they're committed, 100% committed. I have all the confidence in who we're gonna do it.
I have a lot of confidence in their, their passion for doing this and I think we have some good people in place. I'm just somewhat disappointed that we haven't seen any detail on this contract. We are giving up control and taking this leap of faith. And we're still funding them. Just a little, if there's one area that I'm uncomfortable with that I want to succeed, is this one. I know it probably doesn't make a lot of sense with some of you. I'd like to see the Ramsdale succeed, but, and would have preferred to see the contract and a little bit more of the goal-setting ideas that they have to achieve that.
We have not signed the contract.
No, their, their intent is to have something for the first meeting in January for council, excuse me, June. I'm trying to wish you away this summer. My apologies. That they'd have something for council's review at the first meeting in June. And again, it's council's authority that they're going to act on and that means there's, there's going to have to be an agreement in place between them. And if you don't like the agreement.
And I would think like any other agreement, there would be a way out of it.
Exactly.
We've likewise not approved the DDA by today.
It's part of the.
That's part of the budget, yeah.
So unless.
Well, that's something I'd like to discuss. Because originally, they were projected to pay $30,000 for services to the city and they cut that back to $10,000. They also have a reserve fund. I would like the city to be paid for the work that they do from the DDA.
Staff made a request that they reimburse the city for $30,000. They took it back to their board, their committee, and it didn't work out in their budget. And it backed us down. So that's what they're suggesting is the town. It's a start, it's an improvement, more than we're getting before. It's not as much as staff would have liked, but we're right.
Do we quantify what we're going to do for $10,000? I mean, do we, do we, do we tell them what we're going to do for the $10,000? Is that, or are we just $10,000 and we do whatever?
We continue to provide the services as we provided in the past. We're just getting some more money back. That's another thing that, that, that will be before council in the next few months is I'm going to have the DDA come and, and at one of the workshops and just present what they are, what they do, how they operate, to increase the understanding of, of council. They don't the dialogues and start working towards a tiftrial.
They are looking at some structural changes and improvements and I think I talked to Jeff.
Yeah, they're looking, they're, I, I will give them a lot of credit. The easy default play would have been going right to the executive director and model. But they have kind of parallel tracks right now. We've got one committee looking at getting applications for an executive director and another committee going out within a community and see if there's any way to collaborate with other organizations to improve efficiencies and reduce costs. So we'll give them a lot of credit for, yeah, thinking about that. And they also are aware that they need to contribute more to the city. It just wasn't working out in this year's budget.
So are we good for the May or do we need a work session next week?
I'm comfortable. Comfortable with it. I'm comfortable unless something shocking comes up.
I'm, I'm comfortable.
I understand your.
Your.
I'm uncomfortable.